The meeting is recorded, just so everyone's aware. We're on video. We're going to open bids for cleaning services. I have received two. Bonded Services. All right, total cost for a three-year contract? Part two, $900. And part three, $4,800. So obviously, this is a three-part proposal.
I think we spectated a courthouse.
The other two properties. So part two would probably be 911. Part three would be the Conservation District building.
How does that compare to the current contract?
I'd honestly have to go look, but I was wondering about part two and part three. Those aren't their additional times they come in to do any heavy winter cleaning of carpets or something, is it?
Oh, okay.
That's what I'm wondering what the other parts are.
Sound wave or something, really low.
Yeah, at 128, I think it's just the general cleaning of all three of the buildings, four of the buildings.
Is that correct? Thank you.
This would include Conservation District, Hickory Street here, and 911, right?
Yes, it says, "Orange County Courthouse, Hickory Street Annex, Rouse Annex Building, and the Stone Building," which is Conservation District, all those things.
There's no longer the Stone.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
So, that's, this bid is from Bonded Services Corporation. And their contract for three-year total would be $129,456. Part two would be $900. And part three would be $5,040.
Pretty thorough.
Yes. All right, thank you. Would you like to see them?
Yes, please.
The one caveat with BEI is that they would have to clean during the day.
Yeah, part of the reasoning is that this program that they put together is part of the state's effort to integrate, you know, persons with disabilities into the workforce, into the community. And so, I don't know if all, does all of it have to be done during the day, though? Like, some portion of it? I'd be curious to talk to, to have a little bit more information from Dr. Clark on it, but that's part of the benefit of the program, is that they're integrating, you know, they want them to be working during daylight hours, not, you know, kind of coming in at night when everybody's gone, you know, and that kind of thing.
Part of their mandate is that they're working with other employees.
Yeah.
That's why they can't just work on their own evenings.
You could have a couple evening hours, like you can start later in the day and have a couple evening hours outside of business hours.
Yeah, because that would basically, some overlap. They start at 3:30 or something, it'd be fine.
Georgia tests.
I'd like to do. I suppose you could have, you know, or have a conversation to get some more information on that, because there's a lot of flexibility from what Dr. Clark pitched.
From our made, on a security standpoint, or by its own standpoint, if we had somebody in our office disclosing medical and financial information, I wouldn't want somebody coming in to clean the office while we were doing this.
They wouldn't, it would only be like you and your staff. If there was a community person in there, they wouldn't be allowed to go in and clean. They would under, because we went through that with them, too. We had the same concerns if somebody was in the building, so. And that's what they said to us, they could go to another part of the building and then adjust their cleaning schedule.
Do you use BEI now?
Oh, okay.
So everyone's aware, the daily services to be performed would be the part one. Part two would be quarterly services to be performed, such as bathroom floors receive mechanical scrub. And then part three would be yearly services to be performed, all carpeting to receive thorough mechanical shampoo cleaning. So that's the difference in the breakdown of pricing. All right. Any questions, Diana? All right, we'll move on. Thank you. Jail Programs, Guardian RFID.
What that is, is a timekeeping system. It's a handheld unit. All inmates will be issued a bracelet, got a barcode on it. Anytime you have any type of interaction with that inmate, whether it be meal pass, bed pass, everything's documented. There's going to be little units put on each wall in the housing units. So the staff member has to go through the housing unit, go to the other side of the housing unit, scan that button, and then that documents every time. Security checks have been made. They have, as far as legality issues, anything that's documented on here, when we pass out a razor, when we do any of this stuff, everything is documented in the system. When we collect that razor, it's documented in the system. This is a grant through PCor. Once the agreement's, if the agreement's signed, we send it back to Guardian. They will forward all the information to PCor and get everything taken care of. There is a fee, I want to say it's around $3,500 annually, and what that's for is the software, any type of technical support we may need. I believe it's a five-year agreement.
Thank you, John. I sat through a presentation on this in, at CCAP. I was pretty impressed by what I learned there. And having that, this grant opportunity is, I believe it was $30,000 to, that PCor is putting toward the support each county.
Right. I think total, from what I was told, is like one million total, but yeah, each county is going to get a little bit of that.
And so then the annual fee, which is $3,500, would be due every year?
Yes, I think after the, I think after the first year, first year's free, then after that is $3,500 a year.
Okay. That's what I thought, that the first year, they waived the annual fee.
Right.
All right. Thank you, I was quite impressed, actually. Two of the commissioners from Forest County encouraged me to attend my CCAP presentation because they were quite impressed, and I felt we could take advantage of that. All right. Any questions from anyone?
I had looked at a similar product with John, prior to this particular product, that basically did the same thing. But after talking with John, this product is superior to the prior product that was demoed with us. They don't have to carry around this little, they call it the pipe, the rest of the thing. So, in talking with John, they have to do all this documentation now, which is all manual and written down. And, you know, so that labor process is something they do now. Now it's more of a streamlined, documented, more efficient process, so it really looks like a good solution. From our end, John, there isn't anything that IT has to do from a technology perspective. The vendor, I mean, we may need to do some firewall work, but other than that, the vendor really is doing this fairly turnkey.
Yeah, they're going to do, I think, two different days, they'll come in and do training with staff, where we're all the, the whole system and how to use it.
We may need to do some wireless in the jail for this.
Right, okay.
Which is not included in the cost at this point. That's something that we may need to talk to the commissioners about, you know, outside of this. But the project itself and the process just looks like it's really something that...
There's a lot of correctional facilities going to this. I'm getting emails from other wardens saying, "Hey, does anybody have this? Are they using this? What do you think of this?" So, I mean, there's a, there's a lot of correctional facilities in the state going to this, just for liability issues, paperwork. And there's, right now, we go to an isolation cell, you have to write down, write it out as a bond, you know, you have to write, document everything.
From memory?
Right.
From what you saw.
And right now, it's just, you can customize everything. Issue razor, issue beds, issue new laundry, you know, everything's on there, you're just pushing buttons, and this is all documented, and it's integrated with the jail management system. So I can sit at my desk, and I can pull up anything that has happened with that particular isolation cell, anytime I want to, so.
The principal difference between, and just to be brief on that, the principal difference between the system that I set and the evaluation of this system, the Guardian RFID, is that the other system, you add the pipe that you walk around with a button to touch, is that for the information to get into the system, you'd have to take that, you know, after each round or each shift, and dock it to get the information in. Whereas this system, as the workflow is occurring, it goes over the wireless system and it actually enters directly in, so that there isn't this process of, oh, I didn't download the information, or I lost that little unit, I, you know, so it's just a more...
Instantaneous.
Real-time, instant, you know, solution. It's just a bit more modern, and it's not using a technology that is less intended for this purpose. It looks like a good solution.
Yeah, they provided a demonstration for us, and it was pretty interesting. And you can kind of make your own items that you want on menu and...
Where'd it from?
All right, we'll move on to inmate calling solutions, ICS.
We have, our current phone provider, the contracts up in Oklahoma, I believe, the toll clerk. So we've been in contact with IC Solutions, and their, their system looks fantastic, the presentation was fantastic. The money that this can generate for the county...
Just for clarity, you're talking about the phone system?
Yes, inmates' phone system, yes. In 2016, we generated $37,677 through Securus. According to Exhibit D, I believe, we are guaranteed a minimum of $75,000 annually from this new system. The calls themselves are cheaper for the inmates to make, therefore, less of a burden for friends and family putting money on, on the account. And also, the technology grant, there's the $30,000 technology grant that they're willing to give us.
Who's they?
The phone system.
Oh.
IC Solutions.
The vendor.
The vendors.
Okay.
They're going to offer us a one-time $30,000 IT grant. It has to be used within the jail, any type of, what I wanted to do was the intercom system. This money can help pay for that, as well as this $3,500 fee through Guardian, the annual fee. So, I mean, that money can be utilized where we really need it, so. I mean, it's a, it's a good system, the, the software in the system, I don't know what it's called, it's word recognition. Right now, we have to listen to, if we have somebody bringing in contraband, we have to listen to the whole, from the beginning of the conversation to the end. With this new software, we can plug in pills, tobacco, it's not, anything, we put that word in, and it's just going to bring up that conversation, that part of the conversation. Do you mind what that's called?
And it does voice recognition to text. So then they have a text database that they can actually search and determine if certain keywords in the conversation were, you know, said. So they can evaluate and look for certain competitive problems that might be occurring in the jail, and proactively act on them and not wait for something to happen. So it, I sat in on that demo as well. Initially, at one point, I considered, hey, we can do a phone system over there for the inmates as well. There's some software we can add onto our phone system, and it'll save the county more money. I was so impressed with the solution that John was looking at with ICS, that I backed off and said, "We have enough technology projects to do, let these guys do what they do. Their software's better than the solution we had. I don't need another project. Let ICS do what ICS does." It was that impressive, so.
I hope their voice recognition is better than my iPhone, because I've gotten a lot of trouble.
So, again, I didn't even know these were on your work session agenda, but, and I didn't come in here to split John's stuff, but I did, I did look at that as well, with John, and the solution compared to what you're working with today, it has a lot more features, you know, that will allow you to do what, you know, what the guards do, make these a little more efficient.
So, just for clarity, they're going to give you a grant that's $30,000 to pay for the install, or just, just in general, they're going to just give you a grant to have a new phone system? What's the installation going to be, or what's, is there any, like, or you just, it's just a software package?
Yeah, well, they're going to put, give us 16 brand-new phones for the housing units. They're going to put six new phones in the visiting rooms. Everything is included with everything, there's no, there's no fee.
Inmate phone systems, it's a lucrative business for the vendor, and obviously, there's a profit side to be able to give counties their share of the business. And so when you look at, you know, the potential for, you said your annual revenue on our side was 30...
$37,000 through Securus.
Right.
And that's at $7,000.
Right. And on top of that, they're kicking you a one-time, they're calling it a grant.
Sign-on bonus.
Sign-on bonus.
Well, I mean, they're, they're saying they're, they're projecting $75,000.
That's a mandatory guarantee, minimum of $75,000. If we say, and if you look at, like, Securus...
That's all commissary money, right? No, it's not.
No, this, the, the commissary is through key. This is, I think you get two different...
I think that funds commissary.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask. This money, like, it's not coming directly to the county, it's going to the commissary county.
Exactly, exactly.
So, they just give this to you for free?
The whole phone system?
The, so they charge the inmates.
They're going to provide you a period, they're going to be making a lot of them.
It's, it's a lucrative business.
I know, but how much is, do you have to pay? I mean, somebody, I mean, they're giving you a 30, sorry to ask questions.
No, go ahead.
$30,000 with a sign-on bonus, and then you're guaranteed to make $75,000.
Everybody...
So that's, I mean, if you look at...
How much is the county, how much you have to pay to get the system?
Nothing.
So how do they make money?
It's a lucrative business.
They, they, these phone companies in correctional facilities make an absolute county. What, I mean, you...
So how do, you get $75,000, and anything over that, they get?
Correct, yeah. No, yeah, they get a, that number's so high, they can say, "Yeah, we'll give you $75,000", and that's a minimum, because they're still making way more than that.
They would have, they would have what could be referred to as a captive market.
So they maintain it, too?
Yep, yes.
But, uh...
Is that captive at 133 or 100? How many captives do you have to have to make that amount?
Well, they, they have to use the phone, you know, I mean, they have, they have to have access to the phone, so, you know, that, everybody's just trying to get their foot in the door, you know, and the more doors you have your foot in, you know, it's just a tap, turns on for them.
Yeah, if we were a 300-bed facility, we'd probably be $150,000. You know, we're a 139-bed facility, so they...
But are they basing that on 139? Because what if we, you know, actually do good work in the community, you know, and have 100 people?
They're basing it on the capacity of the facility. So if we're down to, you know, maybe if we're at 139, we're making 10 grand a month.
But it makes it sound like you have to have that many people, and that doesn't sound right. I mean, what, the jail population's 12?
The margin is that.
High?
Yes.
Okay, so if it's 100 people, you still get $75,000?
Yes, so, and to be clear, the, the state and the feds actually set max limits that inmates can be charged, and it's not three cents a minute. And there's a minimum call, you know, so when the call is first made, you know, there's a minimum, here's what that call's going to cost, regardless of how many minutes, then it starts with. So, there's, you know, there's a statute...
Minimum for?
Does the state, does the state set a minimum threshold that they have to be charged?
No.
Okay.
They said max, and the vendors compete, and they say, "Hey, I'll work within this", but there's that max, and vendors can't go without a max, so.
So the inmates may charge them then, to make that money.
To make this one?
Under the max, but not as you said it's going to stay.
So three bucks a minute.
Before you actually set up an account, an account through Securus, if you're just calling through, it's like $18 per a phone call.
Well, they're, they're maybe paying less than they currently pay.
The inmates will absolutely love this new system, because it's, it's costing them so much less. It, it looks horrible, it looks like, how can you make this much money and then charge less and make more than double? I mean, it's managed...
I think the important thing to keep in mind is, it isn't like the county's lining its pockets with the money, it's going to the commissary, I find, and that fund is used to benefit the inmates, so the more money they put into the system, the more amenities they're going to get within the jail. And treatment and other things, so. It's not going into the Caffeline coffers.
That's a good name.
I thought, I thought you wouldn't take it personally.
Yeah, ultimately, the inmates are really benefiting from this on both ends.
All right, so, both of these are coming before us on Wednesday?
On Wednesday.
Fantastic.
And then I'd like to add the phishing software.
Okay. I'll try to be briefer than my comments on John's stuff. So, we do a number of things to protect our network, secure our network, and we can't secure it all from a technology perspective, because we have the human element, you know, responding to emails and doing a number of things. So one of the proposals that I want to put forward, I guess on Wednesday for approval, is to purchase a phishing simulator and training software. It allows us to evaluate how vulnerable we are, our employees' response, and their knowledge base on phishing attempts. Subsequently, when we do that evaluation, we can also do some education to get them to a point where they understand better what is an email that is safe to open, what's an email that's not safe to open. Just to give you a real quick background, about 90% of cyber attacks that occur are through phishing.
Successful ones.
Correct. Well, the, yeah, successful phishing attempts recently, in the last two to three years, there's a new process called spear phishing, where they get additional information on, on the employee or the target, and they tailor that to, say for instance, I'll pick on you, because you picked on that one, so. So, say for instance, you bank at a local bank, they find this information out, they find it through marketing information, they find it through bridges, they find it through a lot of different information, so they have a wealth of information on Commissioner Engelston, and so they send an email that is tailored to look exactly like something that you respond to. So they're getting more and more refined, and that's what they refer to as spear phishing, you have information on the target. So it becomes more likely that you're going to open that, because there's some new information that, "That's my bank, it looks like my bank."
Like, we'd want to give you free Tim Hortons doughnuts, all you have to do is sign here, and then I automatically go.
Yeah, yeah, because you need to, I love those Tim Hortons doughnuts. And you're like, I go to Tim Hortons all the time, I love the doughnuts, and I, you know, I've got a, you know, a few bite-sized, and so, yeah. So the, the attacks are more precise.
And, and this is a huge problem. I, like, across the board, I don't know that a week goes by that I don't even hear a, like, I was driving, I heard it on the radio, that like, I, some government, some county government in Maryland or something got hacked, and all their websites turned to black, and it, they had like a thing, like an ISIS thing on the front.
I can, I mean, I could go on, you know...
And it was all from spear phishing.
Yeah, I could go on for 20 minutes and tell you people, places in the state of Pennsylvania that have had problems. I can tell you other clients of mine that have had problems. I can tell you neighboring counties that have had problems. I can tell you that the PA State Senate Democratic Network was down in March, because they got hit with ransomware.
Did, did Clenching get hit?
Um, rather not, mainly Melissa Counties.
Oh, okay, well, no, that's...
But there, there are no counties, but, so, so it's getting worse, it's getting bad. Technology-wise, we're doing a pretty good job. For instance, we just looked at firewall this morning and saw attempts that were, that were successfully blocked, been a three-minute period, from Nigeria, Slovakia, and, I think I remember, you know, the homeland, you know, but, and that was three minutes, I just casually glanced, stuff just got blocked. That's from a technology perspective, from a, emails coming in that we can't block, because they're coming from North America, they're coming, they seem to be safe, they're just hacked, but they have content in there that will lead and direct somebody to click. So we, we already analyzed the software, we looked at it, we did some baseline testing, we have some idea, you know, how vulnerable our employees are. So, are we low-hanging fruit? No. Is our network, you know, 100% impenetrable? No. Are we doing things nearly every day to make our network more secure? Yes. Is this something that we need to do? Yes. So, basically, what we need to do is purchase the software, start a process of educating, finding out where we're most vulnerable, educating employees. To give you an understanding of cost, this would be a software that, if we were to purchase it, after I did my private evaluation of it, it would cost us anywhere between $30 to $37, you know, depending on how negotiated, per user, per year. CCAP, because they got this through a larger state agreement, and we would actually purchase it through CCAP, has us at a dollar, I'm not a member of their core IT, because it's not very good, but, sorry. So we actually purchased it at $1.42 per user, per year. So significant savings. It's $250 per year for us, $250 to $300, so it's almost, I've spent that much time talking to you guys, probably.
Yes.
So I thought we'd just do this and give it through the, you know, but I thought we, it was a good thing to kind of just explain it a little bit as well. So, it's something we need to do. Ransomware's gone up 400% last year on, you know, just the whole, you know, pandemic We do need to get this acquired and installed and start the process.
Sounds great.
Any questions?
Is this also on Wednesday's agenda? Perfect.
I just, I did attend this session at CCAP as well. So, I'm pretty well-versed on this, and, you know, you did an experiment, I think it was last, at the end of last year, regarding phishing?
Correct.
And this is basically the same thing.
It actually did the same software. And the testing did prove that we've got some areas that, and it's going to be like any other organization. any other organization, um, there, it's a process, it's not a going process, it's something we need to do, continue to do, and continue to train employees, um, you know, what to click on, what not to click on, and what to look for. And that's gonna change over time. Things get more and more, um, precise, so, it's important for us to do, it's, we're gonna have more cost in the process than we will in the purchase.
I think most employees don't believe that just clicking on it and opening it would cause a problem.
One click can bring our network down, and that's not me being overdramatic.
Right.
It's just the way it is, you know, unfortunate, that's the way it is. We do everything that we can with technology, but technology is not the standing grace. Um, so, you know, this is just one, another layer of protection that we need to put in place.
All right, thank you, Bill. All right, any questions for Bill? All right, we can move on.
The only other question I have on the agenda for this Wednesday's panel is the appointment to redevelopment authority as act contingent, is that a slot that has to be told by township supervisor?
Yes. We had one that had to, for health reasons, had to resign, and Joe Scully has said he will take that spot, so it has to be appointed by the commissioner. But he's no longer a township supervisor? No, he's not. Right, but, the question was-
It doesn't have-
White dude property is township supervisor. Redevelopment authority is not, they cannot be a township supervisor to sit on that board.
Is he, is he still willing to serve?
Yes.
That was all I had.
All right. No, no one has anything else?
Do you want to discuss more?
Yeah. Want to talk about it?
Um, coming before the board saying that we're not gonna need more county match, but looking at the next six months and the way that some of the changes have come down through children, youth, and early intervention, looks for the remainder, starting in the new fiscal year for us on July one, we're going to need an additional, probably about nine thousand dollars. Hopefully, the state won't put more of a county match on the supportive employment that you were referring to, because if that comes about, if they move, that's a bit, uh, a ninety-ten, and looking at what we're projecting with our supportive employment, that'll be about ninety-eight thousand, so it could be an additional, um, nine thousand dollars coming back to the county. So, we'd be asking for a total of twenty if the comes out. We're hoping they don't do that, but, you know, we'll-
And this is what, the, I mean, the idea being how the budget shakes out in Harrisburg could affect this as well.
Yeah, it could increase it even more.
Yeah.
Uh, but right now, what we're projecting for the next six months, looking at rates, because-
Based on the current?
Right, early intervention is an entitlement program, so we have to provide that service, and then with the special grants because of the, of ANCO contracts, the C-list and all the improvements, because even though we're supposed to have them, the state puts part of that cost back to us. So, it's technology, we don't get thirty thousand. It just tells me it's pay-to-match. So, but, I'll, if you can put that on the agenda for Wednesday, we'll talk about it, governing war tomorrow, too.
All right. Does anyone have anything they wish to speak on?
I just had a couple of quick things. One is, um, I wanted to let you know that, um, oh my gosh, I totally lost my train of thought. All the discussion about ransomwares, it's got my brain spinning. Uh, Paul Pascozzi has invited me to be on the blighting committee, uh, and part of that's because I have attended the meetings, but also because I've, I expressed an interest in being on that committee and, and having a larger conversation about addressing blight within the county, just generally, I think it's time to, like, uh, review our ordinances, review how we have the blight system set up, and-
Blight link?
Well, Paul has actually been incredibly helpful, he's provided a great deal of information I have to read through as far as stuff related to that, and how we can be, perhaps, more proactive, like, with, on the county level, with dealing with blight and blighted property, and, so I'm hoping that this will be, um, this will be something that'll really help, um, focus on that, at least on my end, and then, you know, also be able to have a direct connection with the commissioner's office to that committee. My father sat on that committee, and that's the only reason I had any idea that a commissioner could be on it, uh, so I think it'd be good to have a commissioner on it. Um, we're currently scheduling meetings, or we have most of them scheduled with the municipal secretaries that are involved in the municipal hub project. Basically, we've got the demo built, it's, it's been built, and, um, we've, the, the subcommittee off of the, a COG has met, and, um, and we've basically set up a schedule to start doing training so that we can get this municipal secretaries working on the hub, um, and then get their feedback. Basically, the way it's gonna be set up is, there's gonna be a series of projects that are gonna be, that they're gonna be tasked with, it shouldn't take too much time, but so, to get them in, use the system, and then provide feedback to us as to how it's gonna work, and how they feel about it, and things that they might wanna change. Um, I got, um, information, uh, from Wendy Winkles on the space above the talk, um, the second floor, and I really wanna try to, uh, engage with you and others to try to find, uh, to get that space utilized. Um, the, the senior center, due to all of various budget constraints with the state, um, you know, the move to manage care, everything has affected, uh, experiencing and the area agency on aging, um, and as a result, they've had to reduce their hours, reduce their footprint in that building. Penn Doc really wants that space utilized, um, wants them running it to somebody, uh, so, and it's, it's a really nice space. I don't think people realize how nice that office space is up there, it's been refurbished and, uh, so I'm really gonna try to make a push to get that filled.
It does have to be occupied by someone who's a nonprofit.
Mm-hmm, oh, okay. Um, I was unaware that that was a stipulation, Paul. Um, so, and then, and, and the, of course, I'm, I'm on ACC board, so the community center is very concerned about who moves in, so that's kind of why I've tried to push, you know, tried to find people that we, that would accommodate that organization, um, or complement it. The, um, Hunter Smith, who is the, um, I, I think he's in Eagle Scout, who, I can't, I can never remember what the designation is, I should go ask Dan to give the specifics. Anyway, he's the volunteer that's, um, as a part of his Eagle Scout project, uh, was to figure out a situation for the benches along the bike trail. We've had numerous conversations about having benches along the bike trail, people wanting them, seniors wanting them, they're going on walks on there. We determined that we would utilize some portion of Act thirteen funds in order to pay for the benches. Um, the, originally, I was looking at benches that would have cost, you know, the, I wanted nice benches there, you know, along that stretch, I thought it's a really beautiful stretch over, um, but, uh, Dan brought this, um, Dan brought this idea up and found this guy, or this young man who's doing this for his Eagle badge. Anyway, he's done a lot of research, and he found this great company within the county that makes these stone benches, um, with a mold that makes them, or, or I shouldn't say stone benches, they're concrete, but they look like stone, it's a really neat process, and, um, actually is gonna be able to get the benches at a, at a very nice, uh, price, uh, per bench, to where, you know, within two or three thousand dollars, we should have, um, many more benches than we would've had otherwise. They have a stone plate on the bottom, um, they're, or, I keep saying stone, concrete, the entire thing's a concrete mold, um, so, it, it won't be hard to secure them on, on the trail, we won't have to worry about them deteriorating, we also won't have to worry about people stealing them or throwing them, um, which is an issue in a lot of other places where they have to bolt the things down. So I'm really looking forward to getting that project underway. He's got all of this stuff together, he's just gonna get a price, um, on the number. I told him and Dan to figure out whatever they wanted to do along that stretch, and they'll bring it to us, and then, if everybody's comfortable with it, we'll move forward with that, and, and before the end of the summer, we should have, um, you know, I think it'll end up being like eight to ten benches. Um, there's also some, a conversation about putting them up along, um, the state hospital line, uh, where everybody plays soccer, um, but we have to have a conversation, I believe there has to be a conversation about whether they can be placed there, or what, you know, what the situation is there. Um, in the next couple of weeks, I'm gonna, or, next week, I'm gonna be working at the Tidewu Recycling Center, and then also at the Elk County Recycling Center, um, half a day in each place, in order to, you know, see how their programs are set up, um, and, uh, you know, to try to gather information, uh, you know, to further, um, you know, figure out how these systems are gonna work here, potentially. Um, I'm also in the process of putting together a white paper for that to circulate amongst the other commissioners, and then other people that we're talking to about how this could be potentially set up, or, or all of the research that's been done up to this point. Um, after talking with Warden Collins about this, um, and the utilization of inmates, so I think there's a lot of potential up there, um, to utilize inmate labor, especially if we rope in the scope of the project, um, to some degree, and, uh, I, I mean, obviously, we've applied for, we've applied for a grant for a consultant through DEP, um, and we feel pretty confident that that'll come through to do the, to help put the plan together, so it could take many different forms, but, um, but I think that the, that there's a real possibility of, a really good possibility of using inmate labor to help supplement what's being done up there, and, um, and, um, it's, it's moving, it's moving along very nicely. That's all I have.
Um, the Chamber of Commerce asked us if we would be willing to go into partnership with the U.S. Forest Service and the Chamber in order to take a grant, a Keystone grant, in order to help with the phase, final phase of Trails of Jakes Rocks. It looks like the situation is basically, the DCNR has money they wanna give towards the project, but they can't give it to the Forest Service, and they can't give it to the CDAs, they wanna give it to us, since we're the local municipality. They could either give it to us or the township, but, um, we've been a partner with them on it, so we might as well.
Yeah.
And it doesn't cost us anything, any issue with it?
Uh, yeah, we haven't, and-
We just passed the money from one of the-
Yeah. Is that gonna be enough to cover the rest of the way? Like, is we, that's-
This is the phase four that they're talking about, so it's like a year and a half out.
Okay, so that's like the, there's a phase four now?
Uh, this may never come to be, but it could be used for phase four, so, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, 'cause one of the things we, we had talked about with the, like, the idea of a phase three was, was trying to get the multimodal funding for that.
How has it been done to have?
Which is a-
They haven't gotten this, from what I understand.
Okay.
This specific Keystone, this program.
Right, right. Is there any issues with doing that, JD? Do you know, passing that through? Okay.
The DCNR's asking us to do it, so, I don't know. Uh, I don't know. Yeah, I'll sort of take a look at it real quick, but, uh, they said they didn't really need much in terms of, they didn't need an agreement, they just, the DCNR just wants one of us to send an email saying, yeah, we can do this, so, that's another idea. But I wanted to make it for you.
Sure.
I haven't been spending, um, I've been spending a lot of time on properties, um, for the last couple of weeks, for economic development purposes, um, really for the Chamber, not for the county, but, um, I don't really wanna talk much about it, it's just what I've been spending a lot of time on, so.
Okay.
Uh, also, I wanted to turn it over back to Bill for an update on the phones.
Sure. Um, we've been installing phones, system, the phone system between other miscellaneous projects. At this point, we have sixty-seven or so phones on the phone system, primarily in, in phones and faxes, primarily indoor phones, anything else that you could put on. Primarily in the outline areas, sheriff, jail, domestics, MDJ offices. Um, we're, our next, um, target that we're already starting to port are all the fax machines and the courthouse, we're doing that next. That's unfortunately about eighteen faxes that we have just in the courthouse proper, so, we hit that next. They are slated to port, um, this week. Pam? I think I, you know, too, they, um, uh, so that we're slated to port those over, so I'll bring that up. And then courthouse phones, we're gonna hit, as soon as we get phones ordered in, now that I'm fully back from vacation and, um, well-rested, so, we'll complete the courthouse phones. So I'm looking at probably a July completion date for that project. Um, phone systems, since our first implementation of phones in, um, end of December, December timeframe, um, we've already placed about ninety thousand calls through it. We are well exceeding our target, our, our, uh, promised, anticipated, hopeful target of saving, um, forty percent or an excess of forty percent, um, on our telecom costs.
I've only ever told them thirty-five.
Yeah, so we're, so we're saving significant dollars on our, our telecom costs, uh, by putting this phone system in. When I look at the call traffic, um, we have four-digit dialing between our, you know, the people that are on the system now, I see a lot of four-digit dialing occurring between MDJ to MDJ. MDJ is the sheriff and jail, and, um, so that traffic is traffic that's not going across, um, carriers, that's traffic that's staying on our network. So that traffic is traffic that we're not paying a dime for. So, um, so far, it's been a successful project, and it's, you know, the more that we get the, uh, additional phones on courthouse, you know, faster we do that, the better. I think the only phone bill that we have left, you know, and we're not talking nine-one-one stuff here, we're talking business-related, you know, phone system. I think the only phone bill that we have left is, you know, outside of nine-one-one's business phones, is one earthly bill that's our target right now, that, um, we're gonna make go away. The rest of those, we basically may, you know, go away to the new telecom carriers, so, it's been a successful project so far, and we need to, uh, make that, we need to bring that project to an end, and so, looking forward to getting that project done, so that we're out of the way with that, and we can move on to other projects, but, um, so it's kind of interesting, we're fitting that in other projects, you know, but, um, you know, we will give them, we're looking for June completion date, or July completion date.
Great work.
Thank you.
Great work.
These new systems, are they gonna eliminate the need to keep, keep it and redial?
Um, the, is, the new system does much more than that, and it will fix that problem, and that, the alien phone system that we're kept of right now has more problems than the probably ware, so, including that one, you know, so, yes, it will solve that problem.
It'll do everything.
Yeah. It's taking more things than-
Yeah.
It does more things than, like, sheriff people at this point, so, it's pretty full feature.
Have you had an opportunity to still look at the pictometry?
Um, I've looked at it several times over many years.
Okay.
It's a pretty impressive solution, you know, this. Um, several years ago, when we looked at it, it was quite costly. Um, the technology has changed somewhat, um, but the price has gone significantly down compared to where it was eight to ten years ago. So, um, technology hasn't changed a lot, it's still pretty much the same, it's LiDAR and pictometry and flyover, and, um, so it's still, and not to say it's not great technology, it's awesome technology, um, but the biggest change in the last ten years is the cost has gone down. Um, it used to be quite a higher.
Well, I just recently learned, and we all got an email from Todd Lake, nine-one-one director, uh, telling us that he could support the project, um, and so, monetarily.
Right.
And, uh, we're- And we're looking for ways to implement this program. And one of the things that I wanted to discuss with my fellow commissioners would be, would there be, what would you think about maybe using some of the records improvement funds for this?
We were going to put everything we could out of that into civil process and possibly fiscal. Maybe something up there, though.
What in fiscal?
Upgrades to the current fiscal system, the ER system.
So, okay.
Well, I think the thing though.
You mean that 130,000 in that?
39, I think.
39. Yeah, I mean, I think governing war over it is not just us, correct? It includes by fiscal code, as I've spent a few months since I read the county code, but the registered recorder, the treasurer, one commissioner.
Notary.
A voluntary.
A voluntary recorder, I know. And now, does that include the funds that are sitting there, the 139? Do you have a question? Or do you have something?
Forever.
Okay.
Yeah, and we would want to read back through because I, that group is there to make recommendations to the commissioners. They don't have like a technical authority over the funding.
I thought that it was carved out separately. Because I remember reading it and thinking it was very odd because the county code specifically, I mean, most of these committees that we have are not really specified by the code and this one is. So.
I disagree with, just because having read it last year, we went through several of the meetings, we're trying to figure out what to do with it. I think it was the treasurer who had brought up like that the committee needs to be in charge of it. And reading through the ordinance or the code, I mean, to me, and having done research, I was pretty clear that they're there to make recommendations on the utilization of the funding and that they don't have any, like he had read it a certain, I think if you read one line in it a certain way, it makes you think that you should be in charge of it.
Either way, I think what needs to happen, we'll need to, when was the last time that committee met?
It's been a while.
So.
Probably a year.
I think it was last year. Yeah.
So.
Not sure.
I don't remember.
At some point.
So my question is, are some of those funds earmarked though for civil and fiscal? Is that what you're saying?
What I'm saying is that I have had ideas on how that could be spent. We have not had a conversation about it as a committee or as the commissioners. So that needs to happen.
Okay. Because I'd really like to strongly have this considered.
Absolutely.
Well, I mean, my perspective on it, rather than trying to rate the record retention fund, because frankly, there's a lot of things records retention wise that we really need to be.
This would be records improvement.
Well, it's the whole thing, records improvement, records retention.
Isn't there a difference?
No, they're all the same fund, like.
Records retention doesn't have a fund.
Well, I mean, like, okay, not retention improvement. We, there, we need, there's lots we need to do to improve the records that we have. Like, I guess is my point, is that the thing was, is like when Bill was talking about, the last time pictometry was looked at, it was almost a half a million dollars to do the project. That price has dropped down to, what was it, 100 or something?
100.
Yeah. And, and my point being, like, if we look at it, there would be ways to loan money to the project and get the money back over a couple of years rather than trying to rate individual funds in order to pay for it.
Okay. So you get a quarter of that paid through the 911 funds, maybe a quarter paid through the records improvement fund.
Right.
Loan ourselves some money from, I don't know, the year of savings account. You know, I think that it's possible. We just need to have a, I'm not prepared to discuss that now. I have a meeting that I'm late for. So I guess, yeah, let's set up another records improvement meeting or come to the next work session ready to discuss it.
All the vendors gave us money upfront.
Yeah, really.
Well, I think, I'm going to be honest, I'm going to be honest, I think the problem is we didn't have Collins' ball. If we could just get Collins' ball, we'd have like 30, 60, who knows how much money we'd have.
All right. Anyone have anything further? Can I try? Mary, do you have an extra measure?